Welcome to the Fremont Union High School District Trustee Area 5 and Cupertino Union School District Campaign Panel. My name is Jeff Mo. I'm president of Cupertino Rotary. Cupertino Rotary, in partnership with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, is happy to host this event. We are doing this as part of our community outreach and to support our community. Thank you all for coming, and also want to thank the League of Women Voters and Polly Bovee for moderating this event. And now I'd like to introduce the executive director of the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, who will say a few words. Deb?
Oh, this needs to be much lower. Good afternoon, and thank you to the Rotary Club and the League of Women Voters being such good partners and putting on this very important candidate forum. And, by the way, I am a proud graduate of the Cupertino Union School District and the Fremont Union High School District. Education has always been super important to this community. We see it in the chamber, in our many high school and college interns with whom we work, and by working with them, provide practical business experience. Our future business leaders and entrepreneurs are being grown in our schools right now and depend on an excellent education, no matter what career path they choose. I'm glad to see you here to get informed about the candidates for the school boards. These are important positions to our schools and our community, so thank you for being here.
And now we have just one announcement regarding a special person. This is Judy Wilson is going to talk and give an update on past president and past district governor Hung Way. Judy?
Where's Alan? Thank you, Alan, for dedicating the pledge to Hung Way. So everyone knows here she's a friend of Rotary, and she asked me to read this letter to you. So this is her words. "Hi, friends and Rotary family. It's been one of the greatest privileges of my life to have served as your president, your district governor, your lunch lady, and all the other joyful projects I had the opportunity to partake in with this Rotary Club, my second family. However, I must share some difficult news. As many of you know, in April I was diagnosed with stage IV lung cancer. After my diagnosis, I also had to struggle with some disease-related setbacks, including three strokes. With the help of my family and my friends, I've been working hard to gain my strength. I could not have come this far without the love and support of my Rotary family. I have such gratitude for being part of this organization, who really mean it when they say, 'We take care of each other.' No one has taken better care of me than my sons and my Rotary family. However, on the recommendation of my family, I've made the difficult decision to suspend my activities here in Cupertino and to take a trip to Taiwan with my husband. There, I can focus exclusively on my health. There also I have access to some of the best medical teams in the world, who know and understand this disease that I'm battling. I remain optimistic about the future and hope to return home to all of you when my health improves. In the meantime, I leave with love and gratitude in my heart. I leave Saturday morning, so I will not receive any visitors. Sorry for all of you signed up, but she has so much to do, so we're leaving her the next two days to be with her family and clean her house." She's leaving for six months. "Please feel free to write at my Gmail account, and I will respond if I can. If not, no, I so love all of your good wishes." So, thanks from Hung.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Judy. And now we'll move to the main event, and I'm really happy to introduce, from the League of Women Voters, Polly Bovee, who will lead us through this campaign panel. Polly?
Thank you, Jeff. I really am thankful and honored the candidates you're going to hear from today. They are remarkable individuals who have committed to serving in a role that I know all too well is harder than it might look from the outside. It's a challenging job, and it's a wonderful job. So I'm going to ask the candidates to come in right now for CUSD. I am a member of the Board of the League of Women Voters, and today we have two forums. We're going to try to squeeze both forums in, one for CUSD and one for FUHD Area 5. The first is about 55 minutes, and the second will run 20 to 25 minutes, and we'll still try to get you out of here on time. Before I begin, I want to tell you a little bit about the purpose of the League of Women Voters, which has been around since 1920, to improve the US systems of government and impact policies through education and advocacy. And I think the education is part of the very important work that drew me. The League is strictly nonpartisan. It neither supports nor opposes candidates for office at any governmental level. The League makes a difference because of the energy, passion, and commitment of thousands of members around the country who volunteer to work together to safeguard our democracy. There is some new information. I think many of you may be familiar with Voters Edge. That's a longstanding website for the League, is now called Vote411. And it will help with that California ballot that I think we all know can be incredibly confusing. It's a one-stop shop for election-related information and ballot information and factual data on candidates in various federal, state, and local races. These candidates have been putting their information on that as well. So check Vote411, please. You enter your address, and it tells you all about the local things that you get a chance to vote on. On our first forum for Cupertino Union School District Board of Trustees, there are six candidates running for two openings. Five candidates are with us today. The order of the speakers has been determined by drawing names out of a hat. Answers are timed. Thank you to Dolly and Pam, who are working on the timing. The answers are timed. Thank you to the timers, because it's not an easy job, and I will be saying to the candidates that we have to stop now. I want to begin by reading a statement for Nisar Ali, who wasn't able to join us today but wanted to be sure you knew something about him and his candidacy. These are his words. "I thank you all for taking the time to listen and make informed decisions. I've lived in Cupertino for almost 24 years and have worked for tech companies for over 30 years. I have raised my family here. What sets me apart is that I represent a minority community that is underrepresented, and my three kids have gone through the CUSD system. Two of my kids are now doctors, and the third one is an associate scientist. I am a community servant, supporting efforts from the food bank to encouraging voter registration. If I'm elected, my primary areas of focus will include: One, quality education. Making sure our students receive high-quality education that focuses on fostering critical thinking, creativity, personal, social, and practical skills. And number two is quality educators. Ensuring we hire and retain the quality educators who possess the skills, knowledge, and personal attributes necessary to effectively foster student learning and development. And three is quality diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI. Creating an educational culture where all, regardless of their background, feel valued, respected, and empowered to participate." So that's the words of Ali, who won't be with us today, but now we're going to hear from the candidates who are here. And as I said, we're going to be hearing from them in the order that their names were pulled out of a hat, and I'm going to ask them to answer this question. Why are you qualified to be a member of the CUSD Board of Trustees? And we're going to begin with Remy.
How do I unmute it?
I think so. Are the mics on?
It's red.
It's red. Help me, guys. Are the mics on?
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Remy Khan. Thank you so much to the Rotary Club and to the League of Women's Voters for having this platform and this availability for us to be able to express our kind of places within this race. I am running for a CUSD Board Trustee. I myself have gone through the CUSD system, as well as Fremont Union High School District. I have currently two daughters, a first grader and a third grader, who are also at Eaton Elementary School. I've lived in Cupertino for most of my adolescent and post-adolescent life. I've gone to San Jose State. I've worked in high-tech, and I'm a certified life and relationship coach currently, working with others to help others kind of, you know, build themselves toward their dream life essentially. And the reason why I want to run for CUSD Board is because I've been an active member of the community for three-plus years, and I want to transfer those skills through to the Board as well. Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Doug Kuntz.
Hi, everyone. I'm Doug Kuntz. I'm a passionate volunteer, and for years I've devoted countless hours to serving the community through PTA, scouting, and my city's Environmental Sustainability Commission. These activities all involve working to pass along a better world to our children. For the past four years, I've been an officer on the council of PTAs, supporting and building connections among PTAs across the district. This year alone, I've attended parent meetings at Blue Hills, Kennedy, Nimitz, CMS, Gobert's, West Valley, Stockelmeyer, and Montclair. Working with district staff and understanding their perspective requires more than just experience volunteering at the individual school level. Through my service on district-level committees, I've seen firsthand the collaboration required to enact change. One must maintain a cool demeanor and build support with other leaders to make progress. My time chairing the high school district's Community Trustee Area Districting Committee gave me connections across the district and valuable experience leading through challenging conversations. I'm prepared to effectively deal with complex issues on my first day in office. Thank you, and I hope for your support.
Sylvia Leong.
Thank you, and thanks to the Rotary and to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. My qualifications begin with my experience. I've been serving on the Board for six years now, and in this time, I've had to govern through a lot of things: budget deficits, declining enrollment, school closures, COVID-19. I've made and set policies that have really strengthened the district, as well as approved curriculum and programs that have benefited our students. I bring with me a deep knowledge of the district, having been a longtime parent volunteer, whether it was walking school bus leader or PTO president. I've spent years working with parents and teachers to solve problems and build community. And professionally, I bring 20 years of education leadership experience as a college admissions director. I know what student success looks like, and I bring that with me to the boardroom in my governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Long Jiao.
Good afternoon. My name is Long Jiao. I'm a parent of two CUSD students, my son, who just graduated from high school, and my daughter is a fourth grader. I'm deeply committed to our district's future. Over the years, I have actively volunteered in our district and schools, and for more than 13 years, I have been involved in a children's program at my local church. My priorities are clear: transparency and community engagement, education excellence, and fiscal responsibility. Together, we can focus on education and ensure that the voice of parents and residents are heard. Thank you.
Lakshmi.
Hello, Lakshmi Sharma, and I'm grateful to be here. I believe education has the power to change lives. Public school education is an equalizer. It creates equal opportunities for every single student, from every background, any ethnicity, any identity. My kids have gone through CUSD and FUHD system, and they have not just received academic excellence, but they have received social, emotional intelligence to deal with variety of perspectives that the school system offers. I've been a 20-year volunteer of the system. I've seen how teachers and staff work towards every single child's need, and I have experience from workplace in driving growth. And we all know that CUSD is going through a declining growth phase, so I can bring the growth experience from my work site, growth with inclusive decision-making, you know, financial planning and budgeting and all of that. I can bring that experience and my passion for public school education and my knowledge of CUSD to drive growth for all of us in CUSD. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're going to question number two. It's 60 seconds. We're going to begin with Doug. And so the question is, tell us about your passions and the top three contributions you will make during your time in office.
Thank you for the question. So my passions are making sure that kids get a holistic education that really prepares them for life. So that involves making sure that they've got fundamentals like reading and math, but also make sure that they have creativity, the arts, group problem solving. So really making sure that we're helping to develop kids who are prepared not simply to be members of a workforce, but citizens of our society and leaders. So that's one. Next up, I would definitely cite environmental sustainability. In my case, I have a lot of local policy experience, having served on the Sustainability Commission for the city of Sunnyvale. And there, I think that there's a lot that we can do to make our schools operate in a way that is both financially and environmentally more sustainable.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we have Sylvia. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Happy to repeat the question. Tell us about your passions and the top three contributions you will make during your time in office.
So I am passionate and have always been passionate about holistic education, basically understanding that student success goes way beyond academics and really has to be a balance of social and emotional growth and learning. In terms of the three accomplishments that I would bring to office, I want to tell you about what I've already done, and I'll tell you by telling you what the tagline for CUSD is, and that is "Each Child, Every Child, Whole Child." And that is something that I really had a big part of creating. Each child, basically saying that every child is an individual learner, there is no one-size-fits-all, and we need to meet their needs. Every child, meaning that whether they're in whatever school they're in in our 23 schools, they should all be getting equal opportunities. And whole child, going back to holistic education, making sure that all of our students are getting that well-rounded education. And those are the three things that I'm passionate about, and I have already made an impact in our district.
Thank you. Long?
Well, my passions include education excellence and community engagement. Our schools, as a school district, education excellence is our core. And we also need the community engagement, so that our parents and our community is fully engaged. And another thing I want to say, my top priority, want to contribute, includes community engagement, transparency, and education excellence, as well as fiscal responsibility, so that we can bring back our school district and give it to make our residents be the boss again.
Thank you. Lakshmi.
Hi. My passion lies in holistic education as well. So there are holistic education to me is that understanding the demographics of our area and working towards that. In past 30 years, our demographics has changed significantly, and in past five years, our demographic in terms of special needs has grown significantly. So looking at that, looking into EIL, like English as an international language, it has gone by 4% in past five years. So how do we address the needs? When you look at post-COVID, the needs for, you know, mental health, they're not just, you know, about students, but also teachers need that. So holistic education brings teachers, parents, and students, looking at the demographics, the spectrum of the demographics, the mental and social needs of this newer population, serving towards that, and also including families, teachers, and students all collectively as part of that. There is not just families, but also extended CUSD community, which is a great part to our measures and bonds that we bring in. Bring extended community along with. Yes.
Thank you. Remy?
Thank you for the question. So my passions for the school district would be community, equity, and opportunity. And how I would promote that and encourage that is by incorporating other aspects in addition to academic help toward the students. So one example is as a certified relationship and life coach, understanding not only the importance of emotional intelligence and, you know, IQ, intellectual intelligence, but also positive intelligence, and incorporating that into, you know, some of the curriculum as well. Also, the importance of fitness and understanding there's a lot of science behind what particular things help children, even though it may not intuitively seem connected that it is. And so kind of incorporating more of that into the academics and into the curriculum as well. Those are some of my passions.
Thank you. The next question is also 60 seconds, and Sylvia, you'll be the first to answer it. School safety is a key concern for many parents and families. Knowing that what makes students safe can take many forms, what are your priorities and ideas for providing a safe school environment?
School safety is a big thing, and we have to look at it through a couple different ways. One is physical safety, and one thing I'm really glad that we've done this year is we've actually, we're almost done with perimeter fencing around all of our school sites. It should be done by the end of this school year. This was a big thing. We didn't have fencing around some of our elementary schools, and so that is a big safety issue. Then there's also mental and emotional safety. We know that bullying is an issue. We know that cyberbullying is an issue. One of the things that we've done, we have policies on positive school climate, nondiscrimination harassment, and on student wellness. That really is to protect the students. We've also started a program that's called Gaggle Speak Up. It's basically a tip helpline, so that anyone can report when there's a safety issue and that there will be authorities and administrators that can respond immediately. Really, we have to look at the whole thing. And, you know, unfortunately, we saw that, you know, in Georgia a couple weeks ago, there was this awful thing that happened with school shootings, and so we need to make sure we're staying safe.
Thank you. Long?
Yeah, we absolutely need the protocols to ensure student safety, both personal and privacy safety. Protecting our students is a top priority, and having clear, comprehensive protocols help us to achieve that. Personal safety protocol includes secure campus access, emergency preparedness, and anti-bullying programs. Privacy protocols are equally important to safeguard students' personal information and ensure it is used responsibly. By implementing and regularly updating those protocols, we can create a safe and supportive environment for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Lakshmi.
Hi. This is very, very important to me and, of course, for every single parent I've spoken with. So there are three parts to it, and one is physical safety or on-campus safety. I've been a Project Corner volunteer for 10 years, and having a trusted adult, whether it is on campus in school or outside in the community, is extremely important to me. So I've talked to hundreds of parents in past couple of months, and then they have seen increased bullying because of various reasons, especially in middle schools. There is increased cyberbullying happening. Women and girls have been profiled, teachers have been profiled and been threatened on cyber. So cyberbullying, in-campus bullying, and 30 safe routes to school. We working with community and the city in order for us to be able to provide that safe routes for our students and parents to be able to walk, so that we can, when it comes to growth, and we do expand into different schools, you know, different school sizes and different locations, we could really leverage that safe routes to school in order to provide safety. And then it all includes students, teachers as well. Unhealthy teacher would not really raise unhealthy students, so thank you.
Remy?
Yes, thank you for the question. As a mother of a first grader and a third grader, this is one that keeps me up at night. And I, you know, understand that since I went to school, things are so different now than they were at that time, physically and emotionally. And so really working to have parallel short-term and long-term plans to implement any infrastructures that need to be implemented long-term, but also working with what's available at this time to ensure the highest level of safety, both physically and emotionally for the students, would be a top priority. And thank you for asking this.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you for the question. So in addition to simple physical safety, which we already touched on, I'd really cite that schools as an educational institution, the education and training that you deliver are key to establishing that safety in the school environment. That includes, of course, making sure that you're training teachers and staff well to spot kids who might be experiencing abuse at home, and also to spot bullying and harassment problems that might be occurring among the students. In addition, of course, there's also the education and training that you're giving to the kids, and making sure that we've got a robust anti-harassment and anti-bullying curriculum in place, so Project Cornerstone, and making sure that those lessons are being applied, so that kids stand up and intervene when there's an issue. Next up, of course, mental health supports and making sure that kids are getting the, you know, interventions that they need, so that if they're having an issue, that there's, you know, interventions put in place to make sure that they get back on track. And of course, safe routes to school, making sure that kids are able to travel to and from campus in a way that keeps them safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the next question, you also have 60 seconds. Long, you'll be the first one to answer this question. Discuss the potential challenges and benefits of declining enrollment for CUSD.
Okay, so we closed some schools because of the declining enrollment. But I think the decision happens in 2021 lacks sufficient justification. Our schools are our invaluable assets, and closing them should be an absolute last resort. Unfortunately, we didn't see proactive measures to prevent those closures. For instance, the district formed an enrollment committee only after the closure. As a member of that committee, I saw firsthand the excellent work they did. However, this committee should have been established beforehand, and schools should receive early warnings when their enrollment drops to critical levels, giving them a chance to develop innovative programs to attract more students.
Thank you, Long. Lakshmi?
Can you please repeat the question?
Of course. Discuss the potential challenges and benefits of declining enrollment for CUSD.
Challenges, as we talked about, it's an amazing school system, and we would love for many more, you know, newer parents and students to be getting the advantages of such a system, holistic system. So we would want, you know, declining enrollment, that's a challenge, that many more families and students will not be able to get this experience. And then, as I said, we would want a thriving community. I'm big on thriving community. Thriving community needs more students, more younger families, so we want this area to be thriving. So I'm big on thriving. So what are the, you said, the advantages of declining? So, hmm, I didn't think about it. Declining enrollment, so these could give us opportunities for maybe investing in, looking into newer opportunities. To be honest, I don't really understand, like, what else can I say? I really don't want declining enrollment, but unfortunately, when I look at Santa Clara statistics, this is like worse than California. California itself is going through declining enrollment, and I would really not want it to be declining.
I understand. Thank you so much. Remy?
Yes, thank you. So there's a Facebook group called You Know You Grew Up in Cupertino IF, and there are a lot of stories on there from former students who talk about memories that they have with teachers and some campuses. And it does hurt me to think that some students may not potentially have opportunities to experience that. On the other hand, you know, being able to prioritize the students we have and ensure that they have what they need in terms of support, smaller classrooms, and attention is really important as well, so making sure that we focus on the students that we do have.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you for the question.
Sure. Discuss the potential challenges and benefits of declining enrollment for CUSD.
Thank you for the question. So I'd primarily frame it in terms of challenges. So first off, there's, of course, budget. Right now, the district is primarily funded through an attendance-based formula, what's called the Local Control Funding Formula. So as attendance has declined, also the district's available financial resources have declined commensurately. The district is transitioning to what's called a basic aid funding, which actually means that we're effectively hitting the floor, but that's definitely presented a challenge. Next up, making sure that we've got robust programs and the ability to staff for students. So as schools drop below a certain point, like if you've only got one kindergarten class that's available, you know, if you have kids that don't get along, they can't request to be in a different classroom the next year. And even just, you know, having teachers at across a grade level, they don't have other teachers that they can collaborate with. So definitely making sure that we try to keep above a critical mass is important for delivering the kind of robust education that we want to.
Thank you, Doug. Sylvia?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with what Doug just Yeah, I would definitely agree with what Doug just said. In terms of declining enrollment, when we are funded on a per-student formula, it just means we have less money. At this point, the CUSD is in this transition point where actually we've hit this tipping point where the less students we have, we're actually able to get more money per student because the number of, the amount of property taxes is higher than the allotted state funding formula. It's a little complicated to explain in 30 seconds. But that's what I would say is the benefit. Is actually we're at this point where because we're going to move into basic aid funding, the smaller our enrollment gets actually is in some ways beneficial to us. One of the other challenges, I would say, is the imbalance of enrollment decline. Basically, some parts of our district actually are stable or increasing and other parts are declining. And so when we look at enrollment, it has to be about what's happening in the entire district and what's happening in different parts of it because different parts are going to need different solutions.
Thank you. CUSD, this will be Lakshmi, will your question first? CUSD has a policy and commitment to serve and support all of their students and staff regardless of race, religious belief, language, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or educational needs. How will you support this commitment in your new role?
So how do I support this policy in my new role? Is that?
Excuse me.
Is the question, how do I support this policy in my new role?
Yes.
Okay. As I said, like my definition of holistic is about serving people of all beliefs and all backgrounds. Especially like over the past couple of years, as I've collected data and talked to a lot of parents. So there has been a lot of on-campus bullying related to racial ethnicity and others. So the way I would like to really start is that coaching, putting training in place and putting education in place for teachers. Like, so how do they deal with those situations? Because currently, even though policies exist, but there's no sub-bullet to how do you handle these subcategories of different forms of bullings and harassment that is happening on campus. And there are situations, at least 17 situations, where parents have kind of told me that their kids were physically, mentally disturbed, and they were physically hurt. So how do we coach educators? How do we also bring in the community to also coach them with what is happening with their students on campus?
Thank you. Thank you. Rimi.
This is a great question. And it kind of goes along with my policies and my thoughts around community is being able to provide an opportunity to promote unity and togetherness and have people provide them with a forum to be able to communicate what's going on, whether it's positive or negative, whatever the experiences are. And then working with them, really listening attentively, working with them, and also depending on the community for ideas on how to implement solutions that would work best. Every group is different, every requirement is different. And I think there's not just a one-stop answer for each one. So being able to, again, approach the community as well and really receiving feedback on what types of solutions would work best, I think would be a really helpful way to implement this. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug.
All right. So there's a few things I'd cite. First off, think of this as a multi-layered kind of problem that needs a multi-layer solution. So I'd start off, of course, with not only, the board has good anti-harassment and anti-bullying policies on the books, but making sure that those policies are actively enforced. In addition, of course, making sure that we have teachers who are trained to protect students, foster an inclusive environment in the classroom. One thing along those lines and fostering the sense of belonging is making sure that we celebrate all holidays so that kids basically have a chance to see themselves and also to learn from their other classmates about this rich diversity that we have. In addition, the district, I think, has made some wonderful changes in the last few years to make sure that we have school lunches that reflect what kids might be getting at home. The district has about 72% Asian-American student population at this point. And I think it's important for kids to see a bit of themselves when they go to the cafeteria.
Thank you. Sylvia.
Can you repeat the question?
Of course I can. CUSD has a policy and commitment to serve and support all their students and staff regardless of their race, religious beliefs, language, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or educational needs. How will you support this commitment in your new role, for you, your continuing role?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, actually, one of the wonderful things about CUSD is how diverse it is. You know, we have 23 schools, we have covering six cities, 13,500 students, 43 different languages spoken, and so many different races, religions, backgrounds, cultures. And it is such a big part of our priorities to make sure every student and every staff member feels included. So much so that last year, we actually added a new priority that we call creating a sense of belonging. Because we understand that especially post-pandemic, a lot of students are suffering mentally, with mental health challenges, with isolation, with loneliness. And so putting in place a priority that is not just some sort of pie in the sky ideal, but actually measurable with assessments that we do and surveys to make sure that our students feel like they belong and feel like there is a safe adult to talk to, as well as just making sure that we're investing in the resources like mental health supports, like therapists, like programs, like clubs, like extracurricular activities that help everyone have a place to belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Long.
Okay, thank you for the question. And in the district, we should treat everyone equally. And especially in the classrooms. The teacher, they are school district employee. And when they are in the classroom, they speak for the district. And they should stick to the curriculum. And there's no political and personal belief should be pushed in the classroom. And also, that's poster and decorations are also considered as speech. We have some incidents like antisemitism and other incidents. So those, we should make it stick to our curriculum instead of pushing their personal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Rimi, you're going to begin this next question. Should CUSD move to trusty areas as Fremont Union High School District did this year?
So that's a really good question.
And if so, why? And if not, why not?
Sure. So I think Fremont Union High School District just recently did this. And I think that, again, bringing it back to community and equity and letting the kind of community provide input, understanding kind of maybe what the impacts were over the next year or so, a couple of years, to see what are some of the positives and then really measuring the return on investment in splitting into areas and then determining at that point. But I think right now, we have little information. Once we get more data, it would be, I think, good to make an informed decision at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug.
So I've got a very nuanced take on this. I was really involved at the heart of the districting effort for the high school district. So I'll cite some pluses and minuses. So one definite plus is promoting candidate diversity. So if somebody's running for a much smaller district, then you need a lot less in the way of financial resources and you have to meet many fewer voters in order to be a viable candidate. So I think that would really open up the process to more voices on the school board. The flip side of it is that the process of moving to trustee area elections itself can create some fear in the community. So I think that in approaching it, one thing to do is to make sure that you communicate very clearly what's changing and why, and make sure that people have a chance to weigh in and buy in. So I'll say that for the high school district itself, that making sure that they weren't sued and protecting financial resources was a big move, and that could be a reason.
Thank you. Sylvia.
Yeah, so the short answer is yes. I'll go ahead and say it. But I think what we need to think about is the intention behind the reason for that. And the intention is to make sure that all of the different groups within our community are being represented. And CUSD is big. We've got six cities, we've got 23 schools. And we want to make sure that different experiences are going to be on the board because that is actually what makes a really strong governing board. If we're all coming from, let's say, two or three elementary school experiences, then we don't have a full experience on the board of what's actually happening in the district. Right now, in terms of demographics, our board, we're lucky. Our board actually has a strong representation in terms of we're representing our population. On the other hand, geographically, we are not really representing it. You know, we don't have every city represented. And so it is something that we do need to look at eventually.
Thank you. Long.
I don't think we should divide into trustee areas because, first of all, I don't think we have a CVRA situation. We do not have any evidence that any group is suppressed. And secondly, when we split into areas, so people are not fully represented. As an example, for our today's candidate forum, we only invited high school district trustee area five candidates. And trustee area two candidates, they're not here, unfortunately. Why? That's because we do not vote for them. But guess what? That decision will affect us. That's why I don't think we should go that way.
Thank you. Lakshmi.
Yeah, short answer is yes. And because this requires, like, currently, although the board, current board representation is equal, but then when we look across our 18 elementary school and five middle schools, the representation of students like what the community that serves is different. So by bringing these trustee areas, we could really bring the right representations from those units and that population and demographics also into the board. That also helps with financial expenses. Just for like writing a personal statement for CUSD was $4,400. I didn't know that. That was because we have so many families to kind of serve with just every candidate. Imagine more expenses that go in running just elections for something like this. So I think financially, it makes sense. But also, it is done with right intentions to serve the right population. But it should be done with transparent communication. I've been part of discussions with FEHSD, and I've seen that has divided our community. If the intentions are transparently communicated, the goals are transparently communicated, it could really serve us well.
Thank you. This next question, Doug, you'll be the first to answer it, please. What new ideas do you have for CUSD to improve the overall well-being and mental health of students and staff?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
I sure can. What new ideas do you have for CUSD to improve the overall well-being and mental health of students and staff?
So in my case, I don't know that it's a new idea. But I think that investing in the ideas that we already have in place, so making sure that we've got robust counseling staff, making sure, again, that we've got anti-harassment and anti-bullying training that's woven deeply into the classroom curriculum, and making sure that when we have issues that occur for students, that we really try to delve into what happened and why, and how do we correct that. So certainly, if you have a student who's had an issue in the classroom, looking at how do we, what is the issue? And how do we come at that in a way, a healing kind of way, rather than a punitive, looking at it through a punitive lens?
Thank you. Sylvia.
One of the best things that we're doing right now is every other board meeting, we have one of our schools come and do a presentation on how they are creating a sense of belonging on their campuses. And so I'm going to steal some of our students' ideas because every time, they give us amazing ideas. And so sometimes it looks like having recess buddies and friendship benches. Sometimes it looks like creating a student webcast where they go around and interview staff members. Sometimes it looks like doing a gardening club after school. Sometimes it looks like doing a soccer tournament with several different schools together. What is important for me is that we continue thinking and exploring all these different ideas and letting the students and staff be a part of making those decisions. Because when they actually are the ones coming up with that, that's when they have buy-in, and that's when those things are much more effective.
Thank you. Long.
Thank you for the question. Addressing the mental health needs of students and teachers in CUSD is crucial. We need to ensure access to mental health professionals and resources, providing trainings for staff to recognize and respond to mental health issues, and implement mental health education programs for students. Creating a supportive school environment where mental health is prioritized and openly discussed is essential. Additionally, we should conduct regular assessment to identify needs and collaborative with local mental health organizations for additional support. Thank you.
Thank you. Lakshmi.
Yeah. So there, I go back to my experience of using Project Cornerstone. Having, we do have a policy, right? We do have a policy, but implementation is what we need to do. So what could be done is that, how do we address like the increasing types of mental health issues that have happened over the past five years? How do we train our students and also the families to work with them in recognizing the new ways of mental challenges that they are going through? And also recognizing the similar issues with our educators. They have gone through distribution of workload. We know that our work and our personal lives have been mingled up post-COVID. So how do we address that situation for our educators? Bring in the community and the families to understand the drivers that are driving these mental health challenges because there are nuances to it. And having support for just recognizing and then presenting and then having like increased support for staff which can handle the situation on campus.
Thank you. Rimi.
Yes, thank you. I like this question a lot because I've studied life coaching for my certification as well as relationship coaching. And I'm currently training to be a yoga teacher as well. So understanding the importance for things like meditation, sound healing. You know, as hokey as these sound, these are just so important for us to have an opportunity to provide our students to kind of give them this type of education as well for coping mechanisms. And then the second thing is conflict resolution. Because a lot of time, one of the highest levels of kind of stress for children and for adults alike is conflict. And so helping coach teachers, counselors, et cetera, to ensure that we have what we need so that the students can, on the spot, resolve conflicts in a way that's meaningful, I think would be really important for mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is our last question. What question do you wish you had been asked in this forum? And how would you answer that question? And we'll start with Sylvia.
So the question I wish that I had been asked is, what is your favorite food from our school cafeteria? And my answer is, it's a tie between our chana masala and our spicy kimchi tofu soup. Both are amazing and delicious, and both have been cooked by scratch, from scratch, by our amazing nutrition services team. Last year, we completely revamped our middle school lunch menus. We wanted to do more scratch cooking, and we wanted to incorporate food that reflects the diverse cultures of our student population. And I'm so proud that we did this as a district, not only because the food is delicious, but because it came about as a collaboration between our students and parents and staff, and also because something as simple as the food that we serve makes such a big impact on the sense of belonging a student feels. And so this is just one example of why I think CUSD is so special. And if I'm re-elected, I'm going to continue championing this kind of innovative, forward-thinking work to make sure that our district remains really amazing.
Thank you. Long.
I wish you would have asked, why do you have your priorities? My priorities are transparency, community engagement, education excellence, and fiscal responsibility. Why focus on education excellence and fiscal responsibility? Our school district has a social contract with residents. You, the resident, pay taxes, and we, the school district, deliver quality education. We emphasize transparency and community engagement. Those are essential to make our school district truly of the people, by the people, and for the people. This ensures our social contract is executed properly. Again, my name is Lang Zhao. What for me to secure a bright future for our students? Thank you.
Thank you. Lakshmi.
Yeah, the question, if you would have asked, like, why is public system education so important to you, Lakshmi? Because I'm a child of an uneducated mother and a janitor as a dad. And if it was not for him sending me to public school system in high school, undergrad, and masters, all done in hundreds of rupees a year, I would not have been where I am today. Because of one person studying in a family and public school system giving that opportunity, it changes families and villages and hundreds of thousands of people. One person educated right equally give equal opportunities forever. And for that thing, I want to contribute every single day of my life to education, to public system education.
Thank you. Rimi.
Yes, thank you for asking it. I feel like in asking it, you pretty much asked. I feel like in asking it, you pretty much asked everything. But I would say the one question I think I would like to answer is why CUSD board? And the answer is because when I was growing up and I went through the school system, things were very different. We didn't have a lot of the science and a lot of the medical research and a lot of the things that we have today. And even regardless of that, I really felt the support I needed from my teachers and my counselors in order to have the most kind of support that I could have needed during that time in my life. And that's kind of something that I want to be a part of as well. So that's why I'm running for school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug?
I wish you would ask which public figure I most admire. And that is Mahatma Gandhi. In grad school, I lived and worked for six months in Pune, India, and had a chance to visit the house where the British colonial authorities imprisoned him during World War II. I found it profoundly moving. Gandhi had the discipline to follow his principles even when it came at tremendous personal cost. And he had the courage to always see the humanity in his political opponents. Through these qualities, he led India to independence without violence and inspired Dr. King in our own country and Nelson Mandela in South Africa. His example has crucial lessons for our own political moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you join me in thanking these candidates? They've done a spectacular job. Thank you all. All right, so we have two candidates for area five, Adrian Lee and Danny Choi. And again, their names have been picked out of the hat to start, who starts the first question? And so Adrian, you're the first one. And why are you qualified to be a member of the Fremont Union High School District Board of Trustees for area five?
Thank you. Thank you for organizing this forum. My name is Adrian Lee. I'm parent of CUSD and Lynbrook High School graduates. I'm an art teacher, an educator, and a marketing designer. For over 20 years, I'm volunteering in various road, including as a program director of Idea Foundation, where I offer free educational program like college prep and financial ed. I'm served as a scout master overseeing children program and volunteer in school. Actually, additionally, I work at the full pantry since COVID. Through this experience, I have a deep understanding the needs for diverse students. As a grassroots candidate, I will continue work with the community and educators to address educational issues.
Thank you. Danny?
Hello, thank you. Well, I'm a product of the district. I graduated from Lynbrook High School. Whoa, trying to figure out my microphone. My child currently attends Lynbrook. And I've been, I'm at 12 years and counting as a public high school teacher. I've worked with students from various cultures and socioeconomic backgrounds across the range of academic achievement and expectations. What that means is for one student, just getting their first passing paper is a success. For other students, getting into a top college are their dreams, right? So I understand differentiation. I understand that success really depends on the context upon what the student's background is coming from. So the range of experiences, the range of qualifications I've had, nobody's watched Lynbrook football suffer for as long as I have. And most importantly, in my jobs as parent, teacher, and graduate, I think I've done a good job throughout these roles. Thanks.
Thank you. So tell us a little about your passions and your top three contributions that you plan to make in this new role.
So my passion is, I guess, I'm practicing what I preach. Like, I grew up in this district, so I know about high expectations. And I knew that you had to be a doctor, lawyer, or engineer. Or at least, that's what I thought I knew. You may notice I'm not any of those. I failed at law school, but then kind of came upon like a new experience of really learning from your failures and putting yourself out there. That's kind of why I'm sitting in front of you today. I am passionate about making sure we address issues in a forward thinking way. I believe an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. For instance, the district is facing enrollment issues, a long term decline, which mirrors what's happening across our society. So I want to make sure that we are looking into how we can allay any of those potential harms and cuts that comes from there. I want to address mental health for both students and staff. And I want to make sure that the concerns logistically of our resources are being met. As a San Jose Unified School District teacher, I'm pretty envious of some of the resources we have. But I want to make sure we're using them to the fullest of our abilities.
Thank you. Adrian?
My passion is for these 20 years, I always love to serve children's education. That's why I always do a lot of different diverse volunteers through children program, parenting program, and also the scouting volunteer as a scout master. So I truly want to serve the diverse learning and for child growth. My three priority is I want to prioritize students' education for excellent quality. And I want to ensure transparency and the physical accountability for all the good resource can use for students and educators. The last one is my passion. I really love to communicate to parents and communities. So I want to engage community more and help our district to talk to parents, talk to community, to partner with community's resource to benefit students. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're going to be the first to answer this next question, please. If you win this election, how will you ensure that you fully represent trustee area five while supporting the entire district and becoming an effective member of the entire F U H S D governance team?
This is the first by trustee election. This is the first area five election. So I really want to say that even for the election process, I will vote for the area five. But my duty as a trustee, we have to serve all the F U S D school district. Why? Because we are a big family. We are a big community. Each school is so important. And we have to work together as a team. And also, we need to focus some priority to improve our district, to support each area, especially for these present, I mean, these privileged groups and also under representative area. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny?
There's a couple of kind of, I don't know, bifurcations is the right word for this. But when I think of representing trustee area five, I know that we're not just talking about the traditional school stakeholders of students, staff, administration. We're also talking about residents who do not have children in here but live in the area and are concerned about the impact of the quality of their schools around there. I think as a teacher, I'm always asked, Mr. Choi, why do we have to do this group project? Can't I work by myself? And I tell them, no, the group project is part of why you're doing this. You're going to have to go through life, learning to work with others whom you may not agree with or you may not even like. And I think that that applies both to working within, listening to the people directly within trustee area five, as well as with other district trustee areas. I've had the privilege of being able to meet the other board members. And they've impressed upon me the importance of maintaining good relationships, listening, and being receptive to the concerns of others. So I hope to work with them in a cooperative and effective manner.
Thank you. So Danny, you're going to start this question, please. School safety is a key concern for many parents and families. Knowing that what makes students safe can take many forms, what are your priorities and ideas for providing a safe school environment for students of the Fremont Union High School District?
Yeah, selfishly, as a teacher, we are also very concerned about our safety there too, especially with all the lockdown drills that we have to go through every year. So first off, I want to thank Safe Streets Sunnyvale for bringing to my attention really the concerns they have about commutes from children's homes to their schools. Somebody from that group pointed out to me that making the commute each way to and from school is the only shared activity that every member, every student of the community of the district has to deal with. So working with the community to make sure that our transportation options are in line. When it comes to addressing some of the potential high stakes, dangerous issues that students face, whether they're being psychological or physical, a lot of this has to do with making sure we have an environment where people feel safe to be able to speak, ask for help, whether people feel safe about knowing whom I can talk to, whom can I report this issue where my friend or my coworker is having a hard time. So focusing on providing resources that are clear and proactive so that way we're dealing with things before they become a problem.
Thank you. Adrian?
For the safety issue, we can have a two way. One is environmental safety. Of course, Fremont Union High School have a lot of policy and also have a lot of good way already. I think it's really take good care of that. But the other safety is like online cyberbullying safety and also their emotional grow and also social, social safety. And include bully and also violation and also a lot of score issue, classroom issues. So we need to take care of that part and have, you know, procedure to support, to fix that problem. And also, I really care about the transportation for the no Sunnyvale students. We really need to take care their needs. Especially, we need to provide efficient, I mean, good transportation plan to support them every day.
Thank you. So Adrian, you will start this question as well. Recently, Gavin Newsom encouraged all school districts to restrict cell phone use in classrooms, citing issues with mental health and scholastic and social risks. Do you believe that the Fremont Union High School District should restrict classroom cell phone use?
I'm sorry, can I say that again?
I will be glad to. Recently, Gavin Newsom encouraged all school districts to restrict cell phone use in classrooms. He cited issues with mental health, scholastic, and social risks. Do you believe that the Fremont Union High School District should restrict classroom cell phone use?
Yes, I do believe we have to do that. Even in the private school, they also really restrict this rule. Why? Because students, they only have, you know, a few hour, I mean, half day in school. And the learning for each period for high school students is really important. And if they allow to use the cell phone, they will, I mean, kind of distract them through the learning. And also, that will cause the other crush, I mean, issues like, you know, bully issue and complicate in their social, I mean, relationship. So make life easier. I will say they need to focus on their critical learning and also a school activity when they are in school. So I think the policy should be restricted.
Thank you very much. Danny?
So whenever a student hits me with a tough question, I answer like, you know, the answer that the answer to all tough questions and good questions is the same thing is, it depends. That said, I know that a lot of school districts around the country are starting to experiment with that, L A U S D being the most notable one. And the initial reports I'm reading and hearing about this are very promising. Teachers are loving that students are being put into positions where they can grow in a structured environment, where they can learn how to kind of detach from their cell phones. And I think that as long as we have support from a top down level where administration, district staffers, teachers are all aligned in that, that would be great. Because again, as a teacher, I can tell you, it's one thing to say, here's our policy. But if you don't have the support of backing behind you from other stakeholders, then it becomes a very difficult thing where you as the teacher are being put into a position as the bad guy. So ultimately, I would say, great for the students as long as we can be consistent about implementing it.
Thank you. Danny, you answer this one. Fremont Union High School District offers a broad range of courses and programs to meet the diverse needs and interests of their students. In an environment of declining enrollment, what can you do to best preserve these broad offerings?
So I'm thinking about Sylvia in the previous forum, trying to describe basic aid. But Fremont Union High School District is in a position where they are a basic aid district. So declining enrollment doesn't directly impact their funding. That said, I know that we have big issues when it comes to student balance. Students do not suffer from enrollment decline or growth at the same rates as others do. And I've heard about students who are struggling with concerns about like their favorite programs being cut off. So ultimately, I think we need to be looking forward towards having flexible arrangements so that students can choose the programs and if necessary, the campuses they need to. If we need to be more forward thinking in terms of offering different transportation issues so that students can reach the campuses and the programs of their choice, like some kind of magnet program, I'm open to researching that. But ultimately, I want to make sure students have all the resources and opportunities that they can maintain.
Thank you. Adrian?
For the enrollment issue, I really don't think that will really impact to our school district. Why? All the United States, each state or each area, all facing the enrollment decline. So I think for our enrollment rate, I think the number is really good. Because we have excellent education in our school district. But still slightly decline, how we are going to improve that? Why? Because we have to looking for the root of the reason. We just went through the COVID. A lot of students, they just went to private school for their elementary and the middle school. So I think for the, I think it's a good time for them to come back. And also, we need to promote our excellent education to our community. The most important is we have to strongly engage with community. Like people know how good we are, how good our school is, and win their trust, bring their trust back to our public school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So in Fremont, and Adrian, you'll start this one too. Fremont Union High School District has a phrase, "All means all." To announce their commitment to serve and support all of our students and staff, regardless of their race, religious beliefs, language, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or educational needs. As a board member, how will you support this district commitment?
For the diversity learning is my mission for almost 20 years. I tried, I did different kind of variety of the volunteer. Why? Because I really truly support for child grow. For child grow, let's mean what? We need to care about their difference, their diverse, diverse learning, and also their personal interest. So this is what I working on it. So that is why I've volunteered it. So I think we need to continually working on that. But you know, they still, a lot of students, even they in different diverse learning style, but they still need help. For example, they have curriculum, I mean, approach difficulty, like a learning difficulty. And also, maybe some homework will, you know, is over, over to them. So we need to do some kind of adjustment for their needs. So I think serving the diversity, we have to have a really good evaluation for the educator and the school district, working on it.
Thank you. Danny?
I've always been a supporter of the underdog. And I think of equity and making sure we're covering all students and staff means looking for the ones who are not necessarily thriving. It's easy to kind of point to your success stories and say, look, we're doing a great job. But I care about all students, regardless of their race, sex, gender, orientation, creed, even their sports team. Maybe not the Yankees. But my record as a teacher and a parent reflects that, like assessing student needs, assessing community needs, that's practically second nature to me. And I want to apply that at a larger policymaking level to be able to see where are people potentially falling between, you know, falling in the cracks. This is what I do as a teacher. This is why I teach at a public school that's dedicated towards independent studies. And I hope to continue to be able to bring that level of compassion and insight into a role as your trustee.
Thank you. This next question is about board agendas. On every board agenda in the Fremont Union High School District, there are numerous items about the significant construction work being done throughout the district. What experiences do you have that will help you effectively evaluate and vote on these ongoing facilities contracts and projects? Sure. It's not what you expect to do when you go to school board, but just look at our school board members out there. They've all done it. On every board agenda, there are numerous items about the significant construction work being done throughout the district. We've passed a number of bonds with this wonderful community to make that so. What experiences do you have that will help you effectively evaluate and vote on ongoing facilities contracts and projects in the future?
Okay. During my experience, I tend to the school board meeting. I think accountability is really important. I think as a school board member, knowing, check all the contract before the meeting and also finding the detail of the proposal. We need to make sure We need to make sure all the, I mean, proposal and the contract, all the, I mean, I would say that the budget have to be reasonable and also accountable to, I mean, parents and the students and the educators. So during the process, we need, really need to get parents and the community to involve that. Through all those process, I think we need to notice, I mean, community and also have public to aware the project.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Danny.
So to avoid the BS, I don't have any direct experience with working on that there. What I do have is experience watching other board members at the meetings I've attended, listening to people who are current board members speak of things like at CUSD, I've heard Ava Chow speak of the children's playgrounds and how there are metallic elements to them that may have been placed into sun-heavy areas, which are potentially dangerous to, well, the skin of anybody, but especially the children who would be using it. At FU HSD board meetings, I've heard Stanley Coes speak of the construction that's currently going on at Lynbrook and ascertaining that the markings of where the construction lines are and where the walkways are are in a clear and just easily manageable space so that we don't risk any potential danger to staff or students through there. As I said, this is new to me, but I, I think I'm a pretty quick learner. And I believe attention to detail and good faith go a long ways in this kind of job.
Thank you. So this is our last question. What question do you wish you had been asked in this forum? And how would you answer that question? Danny.
I was thinking about this and I wish that the question was actually asked of my friends and my coworkers because I realized they're much better at hyping me up and talking me up than I am. So I tried to think of what some have said about me, including my, as well as my students. My students will say my classroom always smells great because I'm a coffee snob, which I disagree with. I just think that freshly ground beans are better. I like playful dad jokes. I'm always messing up the latest slang. So learning about how students have drip or they're glazing or whatever they're doing, I think helps me build that rapport with them and also keeps me young in a kind of, you know, emotionally vampiric way. My principal will introduce me to other people by kind of giving them the warning first, which, oh, this is Danny. He thinks he's funny. But, you know, that's kind of a fair warning there. And in general, when the chips are down, I think that they would say I'm a good listener. I make sure I hear their concerns and that I, that I give good advice. That in general, I try to be wise and see the big picture about things. And I hope that's what you'll take away from this as well.
Thank you. Adrian.
My answer is why am I a better candidate for trustee Area Five? I live in trustee Area Five over 30 years. And I dip in volunteer for this community for almost 20 years in different road. So during my, I mean, diverse volunteer experience, I do know people. I know parents. I'm not just lonely parents. I also know teachers and also educators. So I really have passion to continue to serve this community. Why? Because Area Five has a lot of immigrant and a lot, you know, even like a school board tried to have, do, did a lot outreach during the by trustee area map things, but still cannot reach the families. But I can because I have good relationship, all the families in the community. Thank you.
Thank you both. Would you take a minute to thank these two candidates for us?